All right, I guess we'll get started at 6:30. If anybody pops in, that's great. I just want to thank everyone for coming. It's always busy, busy nights, and I respect everyone given their time. Just wanted to do something relatively brief that, you know, we could answer some questions, try to get past some misinformation that's out there on certain topics. And I was hoping that we would cover maybe 30 minutes each or whatever we do on fire station override and 3A. Those seem to be three biggest topics. If somebody has a question on something else and if I could answer, I'd be happy to do so. If I can't answer, I'll try to get the information for you. You know, just a little bit, you know, fire station, there was just a two-question survey that was put out. The survey has a list of two options, location options, basically. One is Walden Street, which is the basketball courts, and one is Pauline Street, which is the old middle school. On the basketball courts, the basketball courts themselves would be moved in this as part of this plan to the baseball field at Ingleside Park. There would be underground storage for water, excess water runoff from the ATC school. So it'd be underground storage put in there, which is also part of the project, which would also help, I think, in some respects, the flooding issues at the pillar house and the parking lot. At the Pauline Street site, if that was chosen, the middle school site, that would be at the top of the hill. The middle school and auditorium would be demolished. There would, the plus with that location is there would be a front and back entrance. The fire would be able to take the apparatus in and out different ways instead of just backing in everywhere. The cost is $5 million more for the middle school. The cost is approximately $40 million for the middle school, $35 million for the basketball court site, the Walden Street site. There's a substantial amount of infrastructure work that would need to be done at the middle school. There's drain, storm drain pipes that would have to be relocated, and that's, you know, probably about a $3.5 million cost, and then the demolition of the building and the removal of the asbestos and such. So there are a few costs there. And I'll talk about if somebody wants to know prices, how much it, you know, because it's one thing to say it's $30 million, $20 million, $10 million, and the bottom line, people want to know how it affects them, right? So I'll talk to you about that, too. On the two and a half override for the schools, the schools are looking for roughly $5 million, 4.9 and change. That will be on the November ballot. The ballot, and I'll encourage people to take a look when I'm sure there'll be, we don't have any samples out yet, I don't believe.
I saw.
It's extremely long.
No, the question on the ballot is.
The question is extremely short. The ballot itself is.
It's very long.
It's very long. The copy I saw was three pages. I think they're trying to get it to just a front and back, but it's very long. There's, you know, people think, okay, there's two people running for president, there's 15 people running for president, so they're all there, and the senators and such. And then there's questions from the state on the back, and then the last question is literally like a two-line question that basically says, are you in favor of a two-and-a-half override for the schools for 4.9 million dollars for the winter public schools? So that will be on the ballot in November. Would it involve, it involves $5 million, it involves creating an educational stabilization fund, which is something that we have been trying to do for years, and a portion of that money would be put in there. The schools, by looking now, and again, things could change, but by looking now, they're looking at approximately a $3.4 million deficit next year. A lot of that is due to ESA funds, which is basically COVID money that is now gone as of the end of October this year. So they're looking at a deficit of that. The remainder of the money would be put into an economic, an education stabilization account. That money would be managed by the town. It would be accessed by the council to the schools. So if the school had a request in a preceding year, you know, we're going to be 300,000 short, they would request to the council. There would be no other use for that money. The council could never use it to fix a road or do anything else. I mean, it's just for education. But it would be accessed from the school committee asking the council. The council would approve it. The money would go into the school budget. School budget's much different than town budget. School budget is a bottom-line budget, right? So in the town, every line is accounted for, you know. Board of Health has a budget, DPW has a budget, Fire, Police, they all have separate budgets, they all have separate lines. When we fund the schools, it's a bottom-line budget. We're giving them X amount of money. So there are, you know, people ask, what's the money for? Why do they need $5 million? And, you know, the fact of the matter is inflation has been rampant over the last four years, but it's also been rampant for the town, right? But there are many unfunded mandates in the school that we need to address for whatever reason. I mean, the state asks a lot and expects a lot, but they don't give a lot. And we're not unlike any other city in town. It's our responsibility, and we take that responsibility extremely seriously, and we're trying to, we've worked really hard to, you know. Do I think we have the best school system in the state? No, but we're very competitive, I believe. I mean, our children get a very good education. They go to very good colleges and universities, enter the workforce, they go into the military, and they're very productive citizens, and we're extremely proud of them, and we think we do a really good job, and we want to be able to maintain that because, you know, it's not only about the kids, it's about the community. You know, education to me is the cornerstone of the community. People look for houses, they look at the education system. Whatever they do, to me revolves around education in some way, shape, or form. We've been, and thanks to the citizens, we've been incredibly fortunate over the last 25 years now that we were able to fund through the generosity, again, of the citizens, three new school buildings. And it's incredible, two of them are paid off now. Fort Banks is paid off, and the Cumming School is paid off. The middle high school will be paid off in another 14 years, which isn't that long. We were also able to build a brand-new athletic event stadium with Miller Field, which is, which will be paid off in another seven years. So we've been able to do a lot with a little. Unfortunately, now, we have three buildings. We're pretty packed in there now. The MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, is incredibly helpful to cities and towns like us. We were, we qualified for roughly 50% of the cost. Now, when we built the Fort Banks School, the cost of the school was only 12 million bucks. When we built the Cumming School, it was 14 and change. We built the middle school, it was 80, right? And now Revere is building a school similar in size to our middle high school. For them, it's just a high school, and it's 500 million. So, you know, we've made some prudent decisions in our past, and the fact that we've been pretty good with financial policies due to people like our past president, Peter Gill, we were able to get very good interest rates on those loans, and we saved over $6 million in interest costs because of the prudent investment strategies that we had. So I will also take questions on the school. And 3A, right, is the hot, hot topic right now. I'll just go over quickly the process, where we are. The council had way back when asked the planning board to come up with a recommendation that would help, that would make us comply with 3A. 3A is the law. We don't vote on 3A. That's the law. We can't change the law. I'd like to change the law, but we can't change the law. So that's the law. We're voting on the recommendation that would help us conform to the law. So the planning board has been, has done an incredible job. All the members have taken this incredibly seriously. We've hired two consultants now through grants from the state. They've helped come up with a plan that would make us, help us conform to the law. So that plan right now has been sent to the state for cursory review, so basically a quick review. The thought of that is it would be nice, regardless if we voted it up or down, it would be very nice to know that the state approved the plan. So therefore, in the future, if we ever had to do something, at least we can fall back on a plan that we've, that some people feel very comfortable about. So that will be coming back from the state. Now, my understanding is the planning board is scheduled to have a meeting on October 3rd. So that's my understanding that, and hopefully at that time, I do not believe they're going to have a recommendation back from the state on the cursory review. I am hoping that the planning board, however, without that, will approve their plan and send it to the council so we can take action. At that point, assuming it is the first week in October, the council is scheduled to meet October 1st, which I think is the first Tuesday of the month, and then October 15th, if we get an answer from them on their recommendation. So they will come forward with a positive recommendation on a plan. That plan, which has been talked about, would include basically two sections, right? It would be the Sail Harbor/Fort Heath section, it would be the Governor's Park section. That Governor's Park section includes all of Governor's Park, and to the rest of my knowledge, includes RPM Fitness and Corolla Roofing, that little inlet right off on the end of Morton Street. So that would come through the council. The council would then have a motion to approve it. You can't have a motion to deny it. You would have a motion to approve it. Anybody can make a motion. You don't have to vote in the affirmative. If you made the motion, somebody would second it. The council would, I'm sure, discuss it. Could it be possible that a councilor asked and uses a council privilege to put that vote off on the first night it comes forward? It could. If that was to happen, I would ask for a special meeting because I don't think we should wait until November, in my opinion. I'm not talking for the council, I'm just talking for myself. I don't think we should wait. So someone potentially could use a council privilege. At that point, at some point, the council will vote on the recommendations from the planning board. On most, on all zoning items that come to a council, it requires a supermajority, which would be six votes on a nine-member council, right? Two-thirds. No matter how many councilors showed up, if six councilors showed up, seven, eight, or nine, you would still need six. On 3A, the state changed a lot and made it only a simple majority. So now you need five yes votes from the council. So if only five councilors showed up, which you would need five, you would need a quorum. You would need every single councilor to vote yes. If four councilors vote yes, we know that there's one abstention. Consulor Tassanari has been, has done his due diligence, he's called the state ethics, he works for a company that's involved with this, so he has recused himself from any discussions on 3A. So again, a recusal is not necessarily a yes, it's definitely not a yes, it's not a no, but it's, it's a non-vote. And to pass, you're looking for yes votes. So you would need, so if there's one of the nine, that's recusing. That means you'd need five of the remaining eight to vote yes in order to pass this. If it was to pass, it would pass and see what happened. If somebody was against it, they would have the opportunity to get signatures and have it put on a ballot. If it does not pass, I guess that could work the other way. I guess the yes people could get it put on a ballot, I guess. So that's how that would work. If it's a no vote, and if nothing happens, it would go back to the state. Winthrop has not complied with the law. And then, we're assuming there's 170 odd communities, municipalities in the state that are part of 3A. 120 odd of those have to have their information in by December 31st of this year. We're anticipating that somewhere between 25 and 30 of those 120 odd are going to reject 3A. So what the state does then, you know, they'd probably file a lawsuit, and this would go on and on, and see what happens. So that's 3A, where we stand right now. So I, again, thank you guys for coming, and I'd like to open it up as much time as we can for questions. Mr., yes.
Jim, I'd like to know is, do you have the specifications of the planning board's recommendation?
I do not have the official, I believe it's on the website. It is on the, if you go to the town website and go to the 3A section and drop down there, the recommendation that was sent to the state is on the website. Is that it, Jerry? Jack, and we'll go back to Jerry if you have a follow-up.
Good question on that. You said, the, sorry.
No, Mr. Dempsey.
Whether yes or no on it, if it doesn't get voted either way by the council before November, what happens to the people who have to say that, correct?
No, no, no. Even if, you know, let's say crazy situation, and we vote December 31st, that's the last day we have to vote, and if we voted yes, the people would still have the opportunity to have an election, even if it's January of next year, yes, or February of next year, yes. Okay. Mr. Seven.
Oh, you're tight.
Thank you.
My question to you is, you have been a steadfast no for most of this discussion. You still a no?
Since January, I have been a no. I've won a T-shirt for a no. I've been written the Globe as a no.
That's all I want to know.
I mean, I don't know how much clearer and not, and again, do I think way back when this was maybe a well-intentioned thing, but you can't fit a square peg into a round hole, and it doesn't work. We have done, to me, my opinion, we have done the work that they want us to do. We should not get punished because we did it ahead of the curve. We're the poster child for what they want from 3A. We're a very dense community who has changed their zoning in two specific areas, the center business and the waterfront, to increase our density even more. And those two units together, those two, the CBD and the waterfront, basically add up to the same number of units that they're trying to force us on top of that to create. So I don't think it's, it's good for Winthrop. I don't think it's good at 880 units. I don't think it's good at one unit because I believe it's an overreach. That's my opinion.
My second question was, I lost my train of thought real quick. Was, you talked too long, I lost my train of thought.
So I'm a good politician, I guess.
What happens, what happens if we go past our date? Has there been a punitive action for that issue?
Somebody asked at a council meeting, I think, somebody asked, can you ask for an extension?
What if we don't, just don't vote?
If you don't vote, you're not in compliance, right?
What's the penalty?
Well, the penalty would be the same to me, unless you said, hey, we're voting in a week or something. If you just blew it off and didn't vote, to me, you're not in compliance, you've broken the law. I mean, it's simple as that, and they would act as they would with another municipality.
Third question.
Yeah.
If it ends in a tie of 4-4 because of Mr. Eric.
Nope, it's a no.
It's a no.
If it's 4-4 and one.
One recusal.
Recusal, it's a no. It doesn't matter the no votes. You need five yes votes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm surprised. You, I've heard on social media you thought this was a waste of time, so I'm surprised you're asking a question.
Well, on social media, there must be someone.
Oh, must be another, must be another guy. Anyway, what can we do?
It might have been John.
Yeah.
You mentioned the firehouse, so I just wanted, many of the firemen and chiefs and stuff, they say they want a firehouse where you can come in the back door and out the front door, but I don't think that's plausible in any of the areas that you've chosen. At one point, I was behind a fire truck going up Pauline Street, going on, and it took about 20 to 30 seconds for the time the driver swung out and then back in, 20 to 30 seconds. So that discussion about going in the back door and out the front door is, in my opinion, a new point, 20 to 30 seconds for a truck, 20 to 30 seconds for another truck. In my opinion, the land that's the corner of Pauline and Waldemar should be sold for approximately $6 million. That gives you money in your pocket to do any type of, say, a berm or repairs to buildings in this town, you know, to help the, especially the people on Morton Street, of course, and in other areas, too. That'd give you money to actually build a berm. I mentioned a long time ago that it should be an in-house job. It's not that too hard, too hard to do. My friends have built berms for their properties, and it's not a big deal. They want, the town manager wanted a $1.2 million consultant fee to build a berm. Basically, it's dirt. So he took the berm down, you didn't take it down, excuse me, but the town took the berm down and put up a wood fence, and so let's give the people on Morton Street a chance, and you can use some of that $6 million. And then, of course, you sell a piece of property to a developer. The piece of property that's sold to a developer, the developer is responsible for taking the building down, for disposing of all hazardous materials, and we're out, you know, we don't have to worry about it. I've heard many people say, oh, the hazardous material's this, and this, and this, and that, PCBs and this. Well, if you sell it, you don't have to worry about it anymore. The contractor is going to worry about that. You can put 10 units up there, or you can put 25 units up there. I mentioned this two, three, four years ago. The building up on, I think it's, on Swamp Scott, which was the same footprint as the old high school that we had up here on Pauline Street. It was a prototype building, so it's the exact same building. You can fit 25, if you want to, and sorry about that, you can put 25, he had him as a student, Tom Groom. Is it Tom?
Tom Groom said, "Not bad for a woodshop kid."
So he does many structures up and down the coast of Massachusetts. He's very well, you know, I had him down there four years ago. It was, I was dismissed, but that's all right. It's going to turn out the way I wanted it to. You sell a building for $6 million, and then you can put up 10 units easily because it's 1.19 acres. The map that is given out to everybody in the town is erroneous. The map that's given out is 0.81 acres, but that's not correct. The easiest thing to do with that piece of property is survey it for approximately $3,000 to $5,000. And the rest of the property, and it's well-known, is Ingleside Park, and you can't build there, can't build anything there unless you go through the process of Article 97 disposition of land. If you go through that process, I have one vote, you have one vote, and the rest of the people in this room and everybody in the town has one vote to turn that property into something other than open space and parkland. I've been saying this since 2017. One survey for $5,000 opens up everything in that whole area. No questions about it. I think the property is about 5,500 square feet. I'm not positive, but that's why you hire a surveyor. You pay the surveyor, and he gives you back the information. I've been saying that since 2017. And I've been dismissed by various groups, by the planning board, et cetera, by the council. Everybody has dismissed my idea. The surveying on the property, the rest of Ingleside Park, you don't have to worry about surveying the whole property. Survey the whole property, my gosh, you're $30,000. I'm not positive. That was just an estimate from a surveyor that I talked to. So let's get the $6 million for the property, and now you have some spending money to do, you know, various things with, fix the firehouse, that's a million dollar in the floor of the firehouse, I guess, that's been talked about. You can fix the police station, which is, you know, a nice addition that's been put up around the police station, but since then, it hasn't had a coat of paint on the addition. The wood's falling right off of it. Maintain the properties with the money that you get for the $6 million you get for that property on Walden, excuse me, not Walden, Waldemar, and Pauline Street. 1.19 acres, Jim. A lot of money to be passing away, to be given away. Firehouse, the firehouse on Pauline Street, and significant other properties around it can be used. There was a process that you were ahead of about buying property from Kirby and the, and the building, the water building. Why don't you give the opportunity to the people on either side of the firehouse right now? Don't once talk to them, I'll talk to both of them. Why hasn't anybody, especially you, talked to the neighbors on either side of the firehouse and see what their disposition is? I know their disposition because I talk to them. You don't know because you never talk to them in public anyways. So why don't you do that? Talk to those two people. The property on Pauline Street is high and dry, has all the utilities underground, it doesn't need much on either side, and there's two businesses there. There's a lawyer that owns an office there, and it's Helco. You could do a quasi-public, private structure there to give them back a telephone and a desk in a warehouse, or anything that you can come up with. And it's been done all over the country, quasi-public, private enterprise. You can do it on either side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let me address a few, right? You brought up a lot of good points on, as far as the trucks going in the back, out, that is available at the middle school site, right? That's one of the, you know, if you want to say one of the pluses, that's one of the pluses. I don't want to speak for the fire chief because he's not here, but the fire chief, I believe, has been public saying he prefers the basketball location, the Walden Street location. Even though it doesn't have, like you said, it's not the be-all and end-all, I think in a perfect scenario, it is nice to have that space and have that ability. I don't think that that's a make or break, to me. I'm not a fireperson, I'm not a fireman, but the chief believes that the basketball locations is the better location for his crew. As far as sale of land in any respect, any kind of sale of land, if we sold any building in the town, it goes into a sale, a specific sale of land account. That account can be used for very specific stuff. Obviously, it can be used to fix other buildings. In terms of the existing fire station, one of, you know, back last year, early 2023, we looked into the possibility of what it would take to demolish the existing firehouse and build new there. The question is not the width, the question is the depth. We don't have the depth. You'd have to go buy, and you'd have to, I mean, you can do it, you buy eminent domain, you could take properties. We didn't fail, it was the proper thing to take individual, single-family homes. You would need to take seven to nine properties by the architects that we had to draw up a plan that would suffice in the amount of square footage it has, and the amount of parking spots it has, and the depth it would need. It isn't necessarily a state law, I do not believe, to have the apparatus come out. It is recommended by the state that you want to have frontage on a building, that your biggest piece of apparatus, which would normally be the ladder truck, to be able to come out from the station and still sit on the apron of the building without going into the street, right? Right now, on Pauline Street, as soon as the building leaves, as soon as the apparatus leaves, it's basically in the middle of the street. So, you know, we would like to, and the fire department would like to comply with that because it is best practice. And as far as the amount of money at the top of Walden Street, at the top of Pauline Street where the, where the middle school is, I think, you know, I think personally, I think is it six and one-half dozen the other, if we take the building down or they take it down, if you can get whatever you can get, I think $6 million is a lot, but if you can get $6 million, I think you're going to get $4.5 million if they're going to have to take the building down. They're not going to give you $6 million, in my personal opinion, and then pay a million and a half. Now, would it cost them less to take it down? It would, right? They don't have to pay prevailing wage like we do. So there's definitely cost savings, probably 30% cost savings for them. So it might be attractive, but I don't think the price is there, but I do think that eventually some sort of buffer, and I agree with you, maybe not in the amount of units, I don't want to see 25 units there, but to have four or five townhomes, which would be eight or 10 pieces of property, that would close that neighborhood off, give it a defined character and distinction, and bring tax money into the town, would be a good thing, right? I mean, if you had five townhouses there, it would bring in more tax revenue than 30 units at Somerset, or 29 units at Somerset, right?
No, no. If you sold it as condominium, it would be three times as much, or maybe five times as much.
I just said it would be more money. I just said five units would bring in more tax revenue than 30 units. I understand five townhouses, which is 10 units, would bring in about $80,000, would be double the amount of money brought in at the Somerset. So there's a lot of advantages of doing that and for the neighbors, right? To give them some sort of definition, to close off that neighborhood, I think that's a good idea. Other questions? Kathleen?
Jim, I was just wondering if there was an update on, I know Tony had mentioned it one of the last meetings, maybe, maybe almost a month ago now. Are there any updates on the communications that you guys have been having, or Tony's been having with the state regarding the denial of the Morton Street MVP grant for flood mitigation?
Yeah, I mean, I know, you know, I know that we got a response saying, oh, you know, basically saying it wasn't political, it was the fact that we didn't have enough money, and I believe we were told to reapply in the spring. To, in my personal opinion, I, you know, I think it's, I think it's, it's crazy that this is all concerning a project that affects three municipalities, affects Boston, it affects Revere, it affects Winthrop. Boston and Revere got money, we didn't. So if we, if, you know, and again, this is a process, nothing's going to be done overnight, but if it came to, oh, Boston's going to do it, Revere's going to do it, Winthrop's going to flood, I mean, they're going to create berms, berms, and all the water's going to come here. So that's insane that the state would do that, to me. And again, in Morton Street, there was, somebody. And again, in Morton Street, there was, somebody brought it up, I don't know if it was Jack or not, but somebody brought it up at the last meeting about a cost estimate of roughly twelve million dollars to do. Now, I don't know how accurate that, no. Somebody brought up a cost estimate of twelve million dollars to do Morton Street. So I did, because I like.
I was the manager.
Okay, so I like playing with numbers, so I did a debt exclusion, right? So we all know there's a difference between an override and a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion is only for the life of paying off that, that item, whether it be a school, whether it be a berm or whatever it happens to be. So if we did a twelve million dollar, if we said it's twelve million dollars, it needs to be done, let's do that. And then let's do Girdlestone also, but I didn't want to forget you two. But if we did that, twelve million dollar debt exclusion, if we borrowed the money for twelve years, it would increase the tax rate by, and these are basically approximates, but pretty close, twenty-eight cents. So the cost of that would add to your taxes, a hundred and ninety-two dollars for twenty years, if that was done. Now, if we got, because everybody complains about, you know, the big, I think, my personal opinion again, most people for or against three A feel it's a bad law. I think I say that. But a lot of people, especially yes, that they think we should do it and comply, even though it might not be the best law, feel that we can't afford to lose the money. Like pay a ransom, you know, sell your soul to get the money, kind of a thing. So if we got a million dollar grant to help us with that twelve million dollar project because we were nice and we complied and they gave us a million dollars, the savings for that hundred and ninety-two dollars would be ten dollars and change. So a million dollars is a ton of money. I mean, I feel it is. I think everybody here feels it is. Do I feel, I don't want to ruin my integrity for that million dollars though. And it's, it's, it's ten dollars a year. It's, it's, it's money, it's ten bucks, it's still money. And it's ten dollars every year for ten years, right? So it's going to cost you an extra, or twenty years. It's going to cost you an extra two hundred dollars because we were, you know, crass enough to say no to the state or whatever. So that's the cost of the grant. Still the money and maybe we get two million or whatever and it's twenty bucks. But so if we were to do that project on Morton Street, it's twelve million dollars, it would cost the average taxpayer, and that's that six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar property value and with a tax assessed value, I shouldn't say property value because everybody's home seems to be worth a million dollars now, but it might not be assessed at a million dollars. So it's the assessed value. So the average assessed value in Winthrop is roughly six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So if you take that six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, it's a hundred and ninety-two dollars a year for twenty years. And then that goes away. And then whenever you look in, in whether it's a project on Girdlestone, Tyleston and Pico, or whether it's a project on Morton Street, or whether it's a new firehouse, you, you have to also look as, okay, when is stuff coming off the tax rolls? What debt exclusions do we have? You know, we are not the most lucrative city and town in the state, but we are in a relative, we're in a very good debt position in terms of debt, right? We don't have a ton of debt. We still owe money, obviously, a good amount of money on the middle high school. When that comes off the rolls, now that isn't until for another fifteen years, that's roughly on the average house, seven hundred and change, that will come off the tax rolls. When, in six years, when Miller Field comes off the tax rolls, Miller Field cost us more than either the Coming School or the ATC School to build, right? Because the ATC School and the Coming School, we got a reimbursement from the state. Miller Field, we don't. MSBA does not give reimbursements on athletic fields. So we pay for that ourself, which was roughly ten million dollars, nine and change. And that cost us roughly three hundred, three hundred and odd dollars a year. So that money will be coming off. So when you look and say, oh, we can do Girdlestone, Tyleston, and that would basically offset because again, when you do a debt exclusion too, if we were to pass an override for the schools in November, in July first of next year, you would see an increase in your taxes. And if it's just for easy math, if it's a thousand dollars a year, you're going to see two hundred and fifty dollars increase in your July, your first quarter of the year. If we were to pass a firehouse in the spring, that would not hit your tax rolls until the earliest would be fiscal twenty twenty-seven. And it comes in stages because we do not, if it's thirty-five million dollars, we do not go out and borrow thirty-five million dollars. We go out and borrow three million to do the engineering or five million to do this, and we borrow as you need it. So the full assessment of that thirty-five million probably wouldn't hit the tax rolls till late twenty-eight, right? So it's something to think about too.
News bulletin?
Well, we have a question though.
News bulletin.
Oh, news bulletin, okay.
And the reason why I'm wearing this mask today. A friend of mine told me his wife and son have COVID. And I guess the strain of COVID is not, they had it for a while, but I had COVID. No one wants to look for that. Zachary Sullivan. Personally, I actually caught COVID today. Can't physically be there in person, though I would if I could. I wish I could, still being informed. But I just want everybody to realize that COVID is in this town. Be very careful. I'll try and wear the mask.
Yeah, no, I think.
That's why I put the bullet in. Thank you.
Thank you for the news flash. Let me just go to the back and then to you, sir, I'm sorry.
Thanks. I'll go to a few. I'm wondering if the twelve million figure, I think, is from the presentation for the Climate Commission.
It was.
They said it was twelve.
Twelve to seventeen, eighteen, I think it might have even been.
Yeah, so, one, do you have a take on whether that's worth spending that money? And two, do you have a sense of if we do it in Morton, like what's that, what's that sort of setting us up on a trend line throughout the town? And, you know, do you expect that kind, if that's Morton, are we expecting similar numbers to keep coming at us year after year after year? And I can just, on the, on the three A, how much money do you think the town should spend to fight that before, before we decide that, you know, whether that's, whether we do or don't think it's a moral thing or whatever? Like what's, do you anticipate a budget of how much you think of a loss the town should incur to keep pursuing this? And three, on the fire station, I think you had, I asked you about a conversation with the fire chief about vehicle size.
Yep. Yeah, so in terms of the vehicle size, and I talked to the chief today about that very question, the vehicle size has no, and, and, excuse me if I'm wrong, but are you trying to say that we could keep the current firehouse and?
I'm just asking. I'm asking, I'm asking, there was a report that, that talked about vehicle size.
Yeah, because we have smaller vehicle sizes, right? And there's certain things in terms of height, a ladder truck. You have to have a ladder truck that can reach the tallest building in town, right? It would be crazy to get a small ladder truck, but it can't fit thirty percent.
Well, the report, the report talks about actually smaller trucks can actually have larger ladders. It's not that.
I understand that. The ladder truck we have goes up to a hundred and ten feet. Smaller equipment, we get, well, like we have an engine on order now that is a smaller engine in terms of engines, right? I don't know the exact dimensions in terms of how many feet it is smaller, but it is smaller. We have to have, you know, just for Winthrop, we have to have specially designed apparatus because it can't fit into the buildings. Both those buildings were built for horses, right? And so we have to literally buy, it's like going to get a Ford, and then you have to say, hey, I want that Ford, but I need it six inches shorter. So we actually probably pay more than most other communities because of the size of our, of our buildings. But yes, you can have smaller apparatus, which we do have, and the fire chief confirmed that we do have. It does not change the need, and obviously that's not your question, but it does not also change the need for the building, to use a building or not. Because the size of the building, the size is an issue. But the fact that we don't have any decontamination rooms, the fact that we don't have any urinals or bathrooms, now we have a, we have a woman firefighter and we really don't have the proper outfit for that. The fact that we don't have any training onsite that we can do. I mean, there are many other reasons other than the station, the station is too small. But let me just touch on your other two questions. You asked about the twelve to eighteen million. Yeah, I think we're going to have to address a lot of stuff around the town. I don't know, I mean, somebody just said that, I don't know how in-depth that report went. I don't know what it does, I don't know what it guarantees. But if we found a project that was twelve million dollars that we know that's going to fix the problem, I think that's a conversation we have to have, yes. Does it mean we're going to do it? No. Does it mean we're going to do it tomorrow? I could say absolutely not. All this stuff, and the one thing I've learned about doing this stuff for a long period of time is that nothing, I mean, I like things, I like that instant gratification and you just don't get it in municipal government at all, unfortunately. Let me just go to this gentleman here because he's asking, yes.
I have a third question, how much you want to spend on, how much you want to spend for?
I'm sorry, how much we want to spend? What I can say on that is that I think we feel we're in a very good position and better than most cities and towns because we have an attorney on staff that deals with this kind of stuff all the time. That's a land attorney that understands the ordinances and everything else. So I think that will save us a ton of money in terms of legal expenses. Will we go out and hire somebody if we have to? Of course we will. And if you have to defend yourself, you have to defend yourself if you believe that's the right thing to do. You can't, you have to stand up, and I don't mean this derogatory towards the state. I'm just saying you have to stand up to, if there's a perceived bully, you just can't run away.
Is there a dollar figure? Is there a dollar figure?
There is not a dollar figure, thank you. Yes, sir.
On two and a half, from two and a half.
The school over it?
Yes, right. So I've read, when you take account of the two and a half plus new growth, you got about one point three, one point two additional revenue for FY twenty-six.
Yeah.
What, so we have that, what is the gross going to be from the override? Like what's the stabilization fund total going to be? You said the school is four point nine.
So the override would be, so new growth in the town, say it's one point two, right? So basically, not exact math, basically fifty percent of that goes to the town, fifty percent goes to the schools, right? So in next year's budget, assuming it's one point two, the schools will get an extra six hundred thousand, the town will get an extra six hundred thousand to help with the expenses that are incurred through inflation and such. If the override passed for four point nine million dollars, that whole four point nine million gets added to the school budget.
You said it was a stabilization fund, was there separate funds?
No, then they would create a stabilizer, we would, as part of this, we would create, schools would create, the town technically would create, an education stabilization fund. The schools feel as of now, doing projections, that they're roughly three point two million short for next year, right? Fiscal twenty-six. So assuming that's accurate, that four point nine comes in, three point two goes to the school for next year's budget, one point seven goes into an education stabilization fund. So let's say the following year comes, and now they have that extra four point nine that they're getting every year, and now the town's still going to give them fifty percent of what comes in, let's say. And let's say they say, oh, we're good this year, we have an extra two hundred thousand. So now they would put two hundred thousand back into that stabilization fund. Another thing that schools, the school doesn't do, and no school that I know of in the state does it either. At the end of the year, if the police was over, right? They, they didn't spend all their overtime money or they didn't spend all their money on supplies or whatever, that money comes back to the town. And that's part of the reason how we create free cash at the end of the year, right? It's excess money, somebody's budget might be short, we might borrow money. There'll be a motion at the council, they'll take money from the police and give it to the fire because the fire is short. At the end of the year, everybody, all those balances come back to the town and then they're factored in and out, and in October we get a free cash number, that number is used by the town. The schools don't return money. If they have, if we gave them thirty million and they spent twenty-nine and a half, they don't give us that extra half a million back. It's not the Winthrop Public Schools, that's just the, they try to use it a lot to prepay expenses for the following year and such. This would give them the opportunity to put that money into an account that they know they can use. So then they could really use it when they really need it. So I don't know if I'm answering your question.
I've read that the town managers made comments that they can't live within the two and a half, it's unsustainable. Meaning that we're going to override here.
I think, I think most cities and towns have an override every five to seven years. I don't think personally, I mean, let's just look at Winthrop. Winthrop had an override in two thousand and nine, fifteen years ago. That override had ten questions on it, eight of them passed, right? However, fifteen years ago, it was a lot different. The schools asked for five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that was their override request. Even if you take the current value of money, five hundred and sixty-five in two thousand and nine is equivalent to eight hundred thousand and change now, not four point nine million. So it is substantial. However, there are an incredible number of new unfunded mandates that weren't around in two thousand and nine. You know, people look at the schools and they say, oh, it's all for raises, it's all for raises. Again, the schools on average get the same exact raise. If they get a raise, they get the same raise as the town gets, for the most part. You know, the schools don't get ten percent, the town gets two. If the schools get two, the town gets two. You know, maybe somebody gets two and a quarter or two and a half. The school's budget for payroll is roughly, let's say, twenty million dollars. They get a two percent raise, just for easy numbers, that's four hundred thousand, it's not four point nine million. You know, there are other things that are in school budgets that are different than the towns, like steps, you know, they have steps and lanes where a teacher can make additional money if they get further, further their education and degrees and longevity and such. You know, the, the police have the Quinn bill, which is similar in a lot of ways that they might get an additional bump if they have furthered their education. But, you know, there are, there are many unfunded mandates from the, from the state that the school has. We have a change, constantly changing demographic that forces us to make changes in, in the cost and expenses. But, so to get back to the, can we sustain on two and a half percent? I, I think it's tough, yeah, I do think it's tough. But I think, you know, you look at other ways to do it. You look at the town maybe saying, hey, maybe we could find ways to, you know, you try to find ways to save money. Could it be, you know, could it be an insurance thing? Can you change an insurance policy? Can you, you know, so there's other ways. But if you're getting two and a half percent a year and on average salaries go up two, or two and a half, I mean, there was a community, and I, I'm not going to say because I don't know which one it was, that just passed a school contract that was twenty-something percent over three years, so roughly eight percent a year. Revere's in the middle of.
That's the benchmark, all schools are looking at that as the benchmark.
Yeah, well. It was Waltham, okay, and it was twenty-something percent over four years. Now, I know over three years, I know Revere is in the middle of negotiations now and they're in that four to six range, which is better than eight, but still not great. But again, these are cities that maybe have more money coming in from the state or whatever. I do not feel we can never sustain that type of growth in Winthrop. I mean, they're, you know, I don't know, I don't want to get too much on the schools, but I think it's very tough to sustain in the two and a half, but I think we've done an incredible job over fifteen years. Now, the fact of the matter is, four years ago, we probably would have had to ask for an override. We were, you know, a lot of terrible things, as Mr. Dowd just said, came from COVID. Financially, there were some good things that happened for the town and it, and it helped us get through three or four years and it enabled us. You know, we were much smarter than many other cities and towns and thanks to the superintendent for doing that really because we were, a lot of cities and towns just used the money to sustain raises for teachers and stuff, and we did not do that. Did we use some of that money for payroll? We did. Some of those positions were created for COVID and they've since gone. But yes, there were some positions about a half a million dollars a year that were spent towards existing employees. But many, most of the money that we got, again, through the good work of the superintendent, was done to create a lot more infrastructure for the kids, right? So we are at one-to-one on devices for every child in the schools from K to twelve. So every child has a device. Now, what happens when the devices break, I don't know, but we're fortunate enough to use that money in very, we, we use that money in a lot of good areas that were good for our students, good for the facilities, we maintain the facilities. Even though they're new, they still, you know, I still consider Fort Banks a new school, but they've had water boilers that have gone and such. And, you know, new schools are fantastic, but they come with a new set of problems that we never had fifty years ago. We never had air conditioning, we never had all this stuff that now breaks on a constant basis. But I, I think it's, so to answer your question, you create an educational stabilization fund. Hopefully, the school and the town maybe put something in and hopefully that's used to, to help sustain them for a longer period of time. But there are no guarantees, right?
In terms of town council, they're just not going to pass it on to the taxpayer? Meaning you were going to keep the school into their, their zone, they have guardrails, they're not going to keep on coming back and override two and a half year after year after year?
Well, I don't, I don't think they'd be back year after year after year, but do I think somewhere down the line, they would come back again? Or the town, the town isn't asking for anything right now. Could the town ask for, and I'm, I think there are things that the town really needs that could have asked for, and we know that times are not great right now and the economy's not great and inflation has been terrible over a four-year period. And it's just, but I, I think there's only so much you can ask for. But, yeah, I think at some point the town will ask for more money at some point. That's, again, then you go back to development, right? And can you develop your way out of this? I don't think you can. Can you try to get more money from, you know, MWRA and Masport? I think you can, but again, I, I don't think we should have to rely on outside entities to support us, but we do, and, and, you know, this goes back to the eighties when two and a half started and, you know, we look and say, is it really good or really bad that the select people at the time didn't choose? They, they tried to do the best thing for their community, right? To keep the taxes low, and I respect them for that immensely, and they didn't raise it two and a half percent. So now the tax rate stayed like this, and now you go up two and a half percent, it's like this. Now, if you had gone up steady, you're already here, so two and a half percent is much more than two and a half percent here. But then I say with that money. But then I say, would that money have been used properly? If we had just increased it, there's no guarantees of that. So I think slow and steady wins the race in this, you don't want to ask for money you don't need. But you have to be really prudent, and you have to build a trust with the people that they understand that the money's being used for a good purpose. I can't imagine that people had an override 15 years ago, and that lasted this city, town for 15 years. You know, can't imagine that we had some sort of, you know, good aptitude in the council and with town managers and such to be able to maintain our quality of living in the town. I, I mean, I walk around the town a lot, and, you know, are there bumpy roads, and are there issues, and are there, you know? Yes, there are, but there are a lot of, I mean, I think, you look at the entrances of this town both ways, I think they look great. Revere Street was a disaster for two and 1/2 years, but now it's, it's beautiful. Not all of it now, because we're doing the other section. You know, I think we maintain our property very, very well. Would I like to get better help from DCR in the beach? Yes. Would I like to be able to do more things down the point at the beach? Yes. I mean, some of that stuff is out of our control, but, and there are C walls that are brought up all the time that we still have to address. We have to take care of the good fortune that we have to be able to live in a geographic location that's, to me, fantastic. You had a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's quite all right, you answered it.
Okay, go ahead.
So, you made an interesting point earlier, when you were talking about the schools needing whatever they need. First question is, I was told they actually wanted, it was recommended to ask for almost 10 million dollars. I want to know if that's true. I also want to understand how all the other departments, like you said, aren't as far behind as the school district. There's still not a clear answer as to why our schools are looking for so much money. I'd also like to add to some of your commentary regarding the schools. I can actually, and this might shock you because you know how I feel about giving raises when we don't have money, we're asking for people for 5 million dollars, but we're still going to settle a contract, which I find unconscionable. But I do not blame the shortage solely on that. But you left out something important, town employees are only paying 15% for their healthcare. That's a huge amount of money that we're missing out on. And in order for us to get them to pay more, we'd have to give them another percentage of a raise, which completely offsets the savings. So I think it's important for the people of Winthrop to understand that, too. Talking about unfunded mandates, I don't know if every single unfunded mandate was something we first had to raise our hand and accept before we lost the funding, but I know that does happen quite frequently because we accepted the Obama money when I was on in, on the school committee, and I'm looking back on devoting yes to that, it was a big mistake. So we get a lot of unfunded mandates, like the bike lane to nowhere we're going to have over Revere Street, because we accept money from the state with contingencies, we make our own bed and we sleep in it. But I want to know why we're so far off. I want to know how much money is being put aside for contract negotiations, if you know that figure. And I'd like to know what happens if the override fails.
All right. So, and the insurance, I touched on insurance, I didn't get into percentages and stuff. Yes, we have a very good insur-, well-
Oh, I'm sorry, in steps and lanes is 1.2 million dollars every year before we ever start talking about raises in the school district. So 1.2 million dollars for over 80% of the teachers is a raise, it's a raise, it's more money, period of the story. We're not even talking about contract negotiations, sorry, thank you.
So, let's start talking about steps and lanes. Sorry. Okay, so on the insurance, yes, we do have a very good plan for the employees of the town. It's 85-15 split, it's been like that for years. It is, it is probably better than the vast majorities of cities and towns in the state. Now-
I will tell you it is because my daughter is the newest employee of the school system. And that's one of the things that brought her back to town.
So, and there's one other point, right? So one of the points is, it's very difficult to find teachers right now in this day and age. So it is an enticement, we are not by any stretch the highest. I, I do not believe, I believe, you know, a dozen years ago, we were incredibly poorly paid for our town employees and our teachers. I do believe that we are more in line. Are we at the top? No, not by a long stretch. Are we competitive? I think we are. I think, you know, the teachers' contracts are, you know, different than other employees. And teachers' contracts, they have like eight lanes, most cities and towns have 11 lanes. Are there things that we should do to change it? And then just the demographics of the whole thing. Years ago, even 10 years ago, we probably had 80% of our teachers that had maxed out, right? They're all Winthrop people, they've lived here, they've worked here for 30 odd years, they've been teachers that everybody knows, the kids, the- Now, those teachers are retiring and stuff, we're getting a younger population of teachers. So now, they committed a little, a less of a step, but they are increasing year after year after year. So steps and lanes does cost money, right? It is roughly right on target at 1.2-ish million dollars a year. And it is something that has to be factored in, right? Again, it's not 5 million, but it is 1.2, and that's, it's not different than any other municipality. Should we start looking at maybe changes for, for new employees? And that's something that you don't see immediate satisfaction or immediate savings, but it does grow over time. But it is, it is a law, we don't have a lot of laws to come to Winthrop. People think it's, you know, it's crazy to come to Winthrop, it's such hard to get in, it's such hard to get out, the traffic, this, that, and the other thing. But, you know, the other thing is, we have a very nice, relatively new school system. We have a relatively very safe community. We take pride in our, in our community and in our parents, and then, and I think the school department does a great job in terms of, you know, residency requirements, because, you know, a lot of times we're not, we're in a very good geographic location to take advantage of the natural resources that we have. We're not necessarily in, you know, we don't have the most affluent of neighbors, right? So we are in, we are in high demand, I think, for people to come here for school. So our school department has to work double time to make sure that our students make all the residency requirements, and that's another plus to the superintendent for doing that, and making sure that they're on top of that, because people do try to take advantage of the system. Again, we're, we're an enticing place to come to school, I think. I don't know yet how enticing we are. You know, a lot of times people, and again, are we the highest paid? No. But unfortunately for us, and unfortunately for our demand, and this works for town managers, superintendents, police chiefs, fire chiefs, when we're competing, we're competing against cities and towns that are neighbors that pay much more. In totality of the state, we're pretty averagely paid, maybe a little higher, lower, whatever the position might be. But in comparison to our neighbors, we're not highly paid. You know, you could go to a city like Revere and make 15,000 to 20,000 more as a teacher. Now, is the environment as good? Is it as safe? Is it as conducive and inviting? No, I don't think so. So there's a plus to be doing that, but it's a cost. And some people in this, you know, we're, we're struggling because we can't afford to pay a 2 and 1/2 override. We can't afford to pay for firehouses and stuff. But there were families that would say, you know what, I'm going to suck that up, and I'm going to work in an environment that might not be as appealing as Winthrop, but I'm going to make, you know, 20,000 more a year. So families make choices that they don't necessarily want to make, but they have to make them for their family. So we have to compete with that. And I, and I think we do a really good job for the size of the community we are, yes.
I remember what my question was, to be honest.
So I did answer it.
It's okay. Well, it was, it was partial, it was incongruent. So when it comes to all of the state's new mandates that are being implemented upon Winthrop, when was the last time Chapter 70 was increased, and at what percentage?
Well, Chapter 70 was, I mean, Chapter 70 has been a disaster in terms of the formula and such for so many years.
I couldn't find also the 5 million Lotto funds that we, that just went on the, what is it called, the cherry sheets?
The what? The, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The Lotto funds that we received.
Oh, the lottery funds? Yes, it goes on the cherry sheet. But in terms of Chapter 70 money, it did increase relatively dramatically two years ago.
Okay.
Like an additional 1.8 million dollars or such. So that was huge, but again-
Where is that information? Because that's, I couldn't find-
Oh, it's on, it's on, even if you look at the town budget on the website, it will say how much money to put in. Yeah, and there is, and I didn't bring it with me, but the superintendent, and I could get, if you want to give me your contact information. The superintendent gave us last night at a school committee meeting some really helpful information, and one of it was cherry sheet money, how mu-, I mean, Chapter 70 money, how much we've gotten over the years, how it's increased, like, by a pittance. But we did get a huge increase because they changed the formula a little bit two years ago. But we didn't get that huge increase this year. So it went up, 1.8 million two years ago, it went up roughly 200,000 this year. So, yeah, but Chapter 70 money, again, and we've been asking the state for years and years and years that you put all these mandates on us, you have to help. And again, it is a game, right? You're going to, okay, we're going to give you more money here, but we're going to take away money here. Because we're charged for our district tuitions and such, and that money goes up and down every year. Jack, you had a question, then back to Jerry.
Yeah, I just want to go back on the firehouse a little bit. Talk about the apparatus. So, you do need new firehouses, at least one, right? The size of the apparatus, you want to go, instead of specking out a small piece of apparatus, you can make the doors larger on a new firehouse so that you can accommodate any, any apparatus. Because apparatus does break down, so if you spec out a small one, and it breaks down, where are you going to go? You need one, right? So you're going to borrow either from Boston, or Revere, or wherever, right? Unlikely you're going to find them with the smaller ones, so.
Well, many times, if you look at Revere's appar-, if they, if we're on mutual aid and Revere has to bring an engine here, it doesn't, you'll see it on the street because it can't fit into the thing. The other thing we have to be cognizant of, too, is the size of our streets, too, so you don't want to get a piece of apparatus that can't-
If you also have an engine and you're sitting out in the wintertime, it's going to-
Well, you can't, we can't do that, right? Now, we have an issue which Jack had brought up earlier, but-
We're quick on that, but the more important thing for everybody, I think, kind of thinks, the firehouses to house the fire apparatus, it houses the guys and women, too. And if people don't know nationwide, the risk of cancer for firefighters is much higher than the normal person. New firehouses are built in three separate zones, you know, hot zone, warm zone, and cold zone. So all the apparatus where that's the hot zone, you come in, you take your bunking gear off, they have extracting washing machines that will clean them of the carcinogens and whatever. This way, and everything's left on the main floor, they're not bringing it up where they live. And then that cuts down the risk tremendously, not like the old days. What you have right now, you run the apparatus inside, you get the carcinogens caught right up to where the guys and women live, it's just, it's not a healthy situation, but. So, in the long run, we want firefighters to retire and be able to have a long life afterwards, like everybody else, and having a new firehouse will, will help achieve that, so.
Thank you. And before, before I get to Jerry, I just want to, to thank, you know, we have Consul Belcher here from Precinct 3, Vice President Belcher, and we have Consul Schulp here from Precinct 4, so, and they're always available if somebody has a question or concern, whether you live in their precinct or not, they'd be happy to help you out. Jerry, did you have a question?
I have two points, and then I'm going to leave because I have to pass my head down.
Mine, too, Jerry.
The two things is this, have you received any legal position with regards to what the state will do if we refuse?
We have not received any information as to what they would do. We're, we're assuming they would do to us the same thing they did to Milton, and they would file a lawsuit against us. We do think, though, the diff-, not difference, but we do feel that there are going to be, like I said earlier, 25 to 30 other communities that are going to be in the same boat. So are they going to handle each one individually? Are they going to put a lawsuit against all of them? I don't know. And some of this is going to be potentially, you know, there's going to be a ruling on Milton in some way, shape, or form, I would think, at some point relatively soon. And that's going to show, too, you know, what happens. So there's still stuff to be ironed out. Is this, do I, do I hope and pray that eventually this goes away, and do I think it will? I do think it will. Do I think it will take three to five years? Yeah, I do. But it, it just doesn't work, it might have been well-intentioned, it might even work well in a lot of communities. It's not a one-size-fits-all law.
My other point was this, I think somebody raised the question about whether or not you put a basketball court in Ingleside Park. If I remember correctly, the grant from the original Ingleside said recreation purposes, we use there, no drones.
Well, the basketball courts would be recreation.
That's what I said, you could have a basketball-
Oh, yes, that, the plan would be to put the basketball, I mean, under this current plan, the plan would be to move the basketball courts in conjunction with this, we wouldn't wait two years. We, we think basketball courts are very important, is, they get a ton of use, and I think this is also a plus for the residents of the Pillar House, who, who on occasion have complained about noise and such at, at the basketball court, and I think this would help them.
Years ago, when I first came to the town, that small court, where Ingleside-
Yes, they were.
I don't remember.
I remember.
Yeah, they were, they were.
They were at the wall field, where they go, where they're potentially going to be moved in, weekend.
I don't remember.
They were in center-left field.
Mr. Gill, and then Mr. Dowd.
I just want to thank you for the mention of the duplex houses on Waldemire, that's the soundest thing that we could do with that piece of property for the benefit of the neighborhood and for the benefit of the community, that it brings it together as a neighborhood, as opposed to a, you know, a commercial, with either a lot of building there, it's in the center business district, you know, so. For the neighborhood and for the overall of the town, I think that's, would be the best thing that we could ever do there, and I appreciate you.
I agree.
The other question-
Jim, I know I asked you before, but expert audit, that's out of the question, correct?
Yes. I, I mean, you know, I shouldn't say yes, it's like I, I'm in charge of everything, but, yes. So the best of our knowledge and ability in talking with the fire department in the flood anticipation, which is something that we discussed when we discussed looking at the A field, was, in, in the A field, we would have to raise that structure 11 or 12 feet, they said, to be in conformance of the 100-year flood, right? Which, and, and, and we would only be able to raise it, I think they said legal, nine and 1/2 feet to have the proper pitch for, for the apparatus to be able to go up. So we would still be short of it, and the cost and everything else, and that would be similar situation to, to what would be done there.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. You did mention the basketball courts a lot here, putting from, you said the Pillar House over to and skating rink possibly. Or, or you mentioned on top of the baseball field, so you would eliminate the baseball field?
Again, I don't make the rules, but that would be, that's the plan, yes.
If you can fit it in, all right. So with this moving the basketball courts to the other side of the road, so to speak, does this eliminate your idea about having another hockey rink and a field house in that area?
The idea-
This conversation is long overdue, Jim.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be in April, April, May, June, July, August, September, so six months overdue. Does this mean that this project, your project, about a field house and a hockey rink, et cetera, is not going to happen?
I could say definitely that two rinks in a field house will not happen. When they ran the numbers and looked at, because one of my contentions was that we wanted to make sure we were able to have reduced rates for our sports teams, and they can't, financially, it wouldn't have worked. Do I still think there's an opportunity to have some sort of sports complex there in the existing site, in the existing rink, in the existing audit gymnasium, and to fix that and put money into that, one way or another, public-private partnership, as you discussed earlier? And not, you didn't, I'm not putting words in your mouth that you discussed it for that, but, yes, I still think it's feasible, but to have two rinks and a field house is not economically feasible for the company that was interested in doing the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you have a question, Karen? No. Suzanne, and then-
I noticed that, because I think you were surprised, too, that, that this RMI-
RPI.
RPI, sorry, RPI, is, is part of the-
Governor's Park.
Yeah. Is it, are you sure it's just not part of Precinct 4, and it's really part of Governor's Park?
Well, it's not part of Governor's Park, but it's part of the proposal. Now, if you're looking at, if you're in front of the building, and you're looking at, and there's a parking lot on the right, and I don't know exactly the percentage, but- And I don't know exactly the percentage, but roughly seventy-five to eighty percent of that parking lot is a town lot. It's basically, i- it, it could be used for emergency snow parks and such, it's a town facility. I believe, and again, don't, not a hundred percent, but the parking in front of the side of the building, when you're pulling in towards RPM, that's all property owned by Corolla Roofing. I believe it's owned by Mr. Corolla. But my understanding is that that parcel is part of the proposal for that district. So the district at, that everybody calls Seal Harbor technically includes Seal Harbor and Fort Heath. My understanding is the district known as Governor's Park includes all of Governor's Park and that parcel.
Is there, and did you all, did you all look at the maps and that?
I did, I, I'll be a hundred percent honest, I did not know that until this week.
Yeah, I didn't think it, because you had mentioned--
I'll be in the last week, yeah.
I think I'll go take a gamble.
Please do. Hey, I'm not infallible, I could absolutely be wrong, but everything I've been told that--
It seems like a weird configuration, as part of, as part of that. I mean, I can understand it as part of a precinct, that, that is certainly possible, so let me, I'll, I'll take--
Actually, it's two different precincts, yeah.
Yeah, it's there, I know it's there.
Yep.
But the question is, is it part of the Governor's Park?
It, it's not part of Governor's Park, it's part of the district. Just as Fort Heath isn't part of Seal Harbor, but it's part of the proposed district, the overlay district.
The neighborhood.
Yeah. So, let me, I'll just explore this, okay?
Bye.
You mentioned infrastructure with the middle school project of the firehouses to up there. That was like--
With any, and, and with all due respect, anything that goes there, we would have to address.
But that infrastructure has to be done regardless because of the drainage situation that we already have.
Yeah, that's part of--
So that is actually, if you put that three million and change, if you back that out of the number, because it has to be done anyway, that does lower the, not the cost--
It does, but again, getting back to what Mr. Dowd said about a potential developer or something, and, and when I was looking at the sports complex idea, part of that was for the linkage that they would give the town would be to do that infrastructure for us. So you don't know in the end who's gonna pay for it. Could it be us anyway? Yes, but it is part of, you know, we wanna be as transparent as possible when we're talking about costs. We would have to pay for it, we wouldn't have the money, it would come out of the bonding for the firehouse, so yeah. Will it have to be done of it? Yes, it will.
And, and we're probably gonna be on the hook for that as well.
Can I interject one st-- one thing? I'm under the impression that, listening to people, because I've never discussed, I wanted to, but I'm under the understanding that a water storm drain goes under the gymnasium.
My understanding is it's under the auditorium.
My too.
The auditorium?
We could both, you know, I'll confirm, but that's what's been told to us by the DPW director, I believe, and that's what the architects was, was saying when they were doing this project. So that's my understanding, is it's under the auditorium.
Well, the CBS pipe, you know, storm drain is, is right at the driveway. There's a parking lot to the gymnasium and to the parking rink. So I understand that that's the end, and they haven't gone further than that. So I understand, and I've heard it many times, that the pipe is under the gymnasium. So, so some people think it's under the firehouse or the proposed firehouse. Some people think, like was just said there, that it's under the auditorium. So, are you gonna cut it off and redirect it?
It would be re, and I said that at the beginning, it would be redirected.
So it wouldn't go under the--
No, 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 it would go down more. My understanding is it would go down more towards Waldes. Susan.
I just have a couple of questions. One, you might not know the answer, but do you know how many new students we've had in the past, like, year? When we're talking about--
Yes.
Kind of reme-- cost remaining the same, but...
Yeah, we've had, you know, we're at the high, and again, is it ridiculously high? No, but we're at the highest level we've been in fifteen years. I think we're at two thousand eight students now, and my indicate, my impression is at the last night's school committee meeting, there's still, I think, fifteen students that are in the process of registering. So we do have a high, now, you know, this is another thing that I think about, that concerns me a little bit when, showing anybody's age, but when, when we graduated back, and not that I went to what the vice called, not-- But when we graduated back, when Dawn graduated, then Susan graduated, the class size was probably around two hundred-ish. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you think of that, and this is something I've been thinking about, so if you think of that, and let's say it's two fifty. If you think about that, and when you graduated, there was probably roughly nineteen thousand people living in town. So now, there's roughly half of that graduating, and there's still nineteen thousand people living in town, right? So I look at that and say, to me, that means we have an aging population, right? It's not that people aren't having any kids anymore, maybe they're having less than they used to. There's not families of twelve and eleven all over the place. But there are families, there, there are still people having children, right? So I think we're an aging, we're an older population, and I think eventually that will, you know, just cyclical its life, right? It's gonna change again. There'll be houses that are starting for sale, that people are moving or passing or whatever they're doing. And then that part, that school age population will start to increase, which, again, then you look at, do we keep the middle school for a school, you know, then you look at the size and of the existing structures and stuff like that. But it is, when I think about that and say, jeez, we have the same amount of people, but we have a hundred less kids graduating, that has to cyclically come back, to me, it does. Your population has to start getting younger at some point, but... So, yeah, so to answer your question, yes, we have an, a, a decent influx of children coming into the school with varying needs, right? And, and we have to obviously main, you know, give them the best education we can do.
Well, I'm just thinking, when these new schools were built and they did their projections, they weren't counting on us having a thousand more units.
No, and I, you know, again--
Which we did already have--
In hindsight, and I was on the committees, in hindsight, you know, the MSBA comes in, and you give them your demographics, you give them your birth certificate, you give them everything, and they say, okay, we will pay fifty percent if you build a school for X amount of people.
Nine hundred and seventy.
Nine hundred and seventy people. And the high school has over a thousand in it, right? So if you look at that, we could have said, and, and in hindsight, we probably should have said, that's great, we'll take it, however, we're gonna add one more floor, we'll pay for that ourselves, because we think, you know, we think we're gonna have more children coming back from whatever, blah, 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 blah. We could have done that. My impress, my understanding now is the only school that we built out of the three that we even thought about in addition potentially was the ATC. And that has a, a, a spot in the back that you can add some sort of addition to. How many classrooms? I don't know. But yeah, we basically have a middle-high school that's eight, nine years old, that, that was built for nine seventy-three, that has roughly a thousand kids in it now. Now, can we still manage with that? Yes, but the other thing with all the unfunded mandates and such, you have classroom sizes that, it's not like, we have great classroom sizes on the whole, right? In totality, our classrooms are in the lower twenties, that's really good educationally. But now, you have such subgroups of children that need special attention that there are classrooms with four or eight, and you might still have a large classroom with eight kids in it. And I think in the middle-high school, we did build some smaller classrooms. But again, there's a lot of larger classrooms that are using a smaller amount of kids that is kind of wasted space in some respects. But that's again, an unfunded thing, but we have to take care of everybody, you know, that's the right thing to do.
And then my other question was on, on the fire station, like, when you guys say the numbers are thirty-three, thirty-five million, forty million, is that like, do you do, you know, three different people come in and do bids? I was just thinking about, like, I just Googled like how much was the recent fire station, and Point of Pines, I don't know how big it is--
It's cheap.
Fifteen million.
Now, you also have to Google how many fire stations Revere has, right? So there, we're building a main station, like compare it to the station on Revere Beach Parkway. We're building a main station that's going to handle all of Winter's needs, not just to hand, you know, a couple of engines and such. And just, you know, I'll get back quickly to numbers for a proposed firehouse, right? Thirty-five million dollar firehouse, and let's say we did a thirty-year bond, the average back to the six hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar assessed value for thirty years would be for roughly four hundred and fifty-four dollars a year. And for a forty million dollar override for Pauline Street, thirty years, same thing, it would be roughly five hundred and twenty-three dollars to the average taxpayer. And again, if you were to build a firehouse, you know, in the spring, if we passed it, and the majority of that money would hit your taxes in twenty-eight, eleven years into that, eight hundred and something dollars would come off it, and I'm not, you know, you could play with numbers all you want, but yeah.
I totally agree, it's well-spent money. I just didn't know how the process worked, you know?
Yeah, that's right, 'cause then we, we've had a lot of people, either Point of Pines or other fire stations, but most cities and towns with those smaller fire stations have multiple other, I mean, Revere has, I think, four fire stations.
So that's apples and oranges.
Yeah, so it's really not--
But I, I guess my question was, do you have multiple people come in and bid on, we can go, just like--
This is, basically, we haven't even put it out to bid, but this is what they're telling, the Kessel and Booth, which is the engineer, the architect that we have doing the project, and they do many other firehouses. They say, to build this firehouse, this is what it's gonna cost you, and they put an escalator in there saying that, you know, even if you pass it in the spring, you know, we know you won't build till twenty-seven, so they're adding in a contingency that prices are gonna go up just because of inflation. And they also have a contingency for overages and stuff like that. So can it end up being a little less than that? It could be, could it be a little more? I guess it could also.
Well, the only other thing I was gonna add was when the override, fifteen years ago, I can't believe that was fifteen years ago, everyone said the same thing, we're gonna have to do this every year, we're gonna have to do this every year.
Fifteen years. Yep.
So that's...
You must have had really good consuls for the past fifteen years. Karen, and then...
Yeah, just the fire station, during all my coffee hours last year with the chief, the, that Point of Pines station did come up a lot. That Point of Pines station is a satellite station. It has two bays. The biggest part of that station is they put in a community room there for the Point of Pines area to use. The headquarters station still is on Broadway and Revere, and that's where, that's where everything comes from. So you can't compare. It, it's, I know it's difficult, it's, it's hard for people to understand, well, how can they do it for little money, and we're doing it for lots of money?
No, but that's a good ex, that's an easy explanation, because that's like saying doing over the beachfront station that would cost less than--
Right, right.
--the fire station.
I mean, even if you look at the one on the Parkway there, you know, near the police station, that's not even headquarters either. But that is a state-of-the-art
Yeah, yeah.
Police station, um, fire station, I'm sorry. You know, but it's, it's very, very difficult. And just to, something else that the chief had said, or commissioner, I guess you were, I'm sorry. You know, I worked very hard on that last year, on that fire station. And to listen to the firefighters, I mean, we're doing this for the firefighters. We're not only doing this to get new buildings, which we need desperately, but we're doing it for the firefighters too. I mean, they live in almost inhumane conditions. And if one of them just drops a dime to OSHA, we're done. Yeah, I don't know where we'll be living. And the fire, the firefighters will probably be living out of trailers. I mean, I can't see, and I don't know where the trucks would be. I think everybody would probably have to move out of the DPW building, you know, to house the trucks. It's, it's just, but I think we have to remember that too, that we're doing it for the firefighters.
Yes.
And then, going full circle with the fire, you know, the fire station and everything, before I hit on that, is that chat, a lot of people, I, sad to say, but a lot of people are online. Is that, can that go out like as a bulk mail type thing, like your stupid advertisements?
As far as the survey?
The chats that you just said, you, you say that it's online, but not everybody goes online. That what I'm saying is those that don't go online to look their stuff up on an iPhone. Do they, can that chat go out like as a bulk mail?
The fire station, like information on the fire--
The two hundred, the two hundred, two hundred thirty-three, I think you said it was more in your taxes.
Oh, the money thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, this hasn't gone out yet, 'cause we don't even have a, you know, this will go out all over the place once we have--
My first question is, could that go out like in a bulk mail? Like your stupid--
Can't go out from the town in a, in a-- It's, it's very-- Yeah, it's very tough as far as the town on putting anything out in a bulk mail. The town can't fund anything. The town can't be a proponent or an opponent of any question like this. So we couldn't put something out saying, oh, it's only gonna increase your t-- You know, we could put out factual information, I, I suspect.
That's what I mean, but by that chat, like, and just let people go--
Yeah, and I'm sure that there, if, when, when it comes time for another fire, there will be a firehouse committee, and they will do a lot of work to make sure everybody gets educated on the pluses, minuses, and the cost, right? 'Cause the cost is, I, I, I think, in the situation of the firehouse, I believe, you know, eighty to eighty-five percent of the people in town, I believe, feel that there is a need for a new firehouse, right? Eighteen eighty-four is a, is a pretty good length of time.
That's what's leading to my next question.
So, you know, the question we feel on the first one was location. And so now we're trying to look, we looked at three sites, we've now added the two, and now we're gonna get a feel, which we didn't do the first time, of the public, to see where they feel. And then we will, as a council, we will have to come up to a vote as to when, you know, would be a prudent time to put it on a special, it would be a special election. 'Cause I, I do think it's important, I do not think it should wait till next November. I think it should be something in, sometime in the spring, and it should be asked of the citizens. And, you know, if they say yes, that's good, if they say no, you wait and do it again.
But that's what, that's what's leading to my next question, is like, my father worked the waterfront, like you know, and everything else, and they had dealt with asbestos. When he had passed back in the early eighties, it ended up because of the asbestos, there were lawsuits and everything else against the waterfront. Do people know what could happen should a new firehouse not get built? And the asbestos and the things they're dealing, the chemicals they're dealing with? And then if their families come back at the town, which is all of us, because God forbid something happens to one of our firefighters? Are people aware that that could even happen?
I think the Fire Department--
You know, the education as far as getting the word out, I mean, my dad got this in the waterfront.
They offer tours all the time, we did it in the fall last year, and, and people were amazed when you were, you know, we talk about it, we talk how it was built in the horse and buggy days, we talk about how they're a hundred and forty-plus years old. But to actually go and look at these facilities and to see the type of conditions that these firefighters are working in, it's just, it's inhumane almost, it's deplorable, and it, and it has to be done. And as Karen said, you know, either we're gonna be forced to do it, or we're gonna do what we should do. Kathleen, then we'll wrap up.
Just one, just one final thing, this really isn't a question, it's more just commentary. Just regarding, you know, three A and this pretty nicely, realization that our KG and the planning board have included the RPM property, again, Corolla's property, you know, in the defined term of Governor's Park. I'm really hoping that especially, you know, certain members of the council that are for complying with three A, that have put out public statements stating, you know, in caps at some, at times, you know, that no new units can be done. I'm really hoping that those members of the council, those members of the planning board, also as loudly as they said that, will come out and say that that is actually a totally non-factual statement. Because even for someone like myself, that, you know, not to the extent of other people, you know, have kind of really put a lot of time into three A, I'm very disappointed, quite frankly with myself, that I didn't pay enough attention to that map. So I take, just as a citizen, real responsibility for that. But the responsibility actually doesn't lie with me or any other citizen in this town. So I really hope that, again, members of the council that have made these statements, the planning board, RKG, really come out strongly at public meetings or on Facebook, whatever they're, you know, however they like to communicate, and say, wow, I need to retract that totally non-factual statement because it's outrageous that this property was included in Governor's Park when it's one hundred percent not. So I really hope that people, you know, do some inventory of themselves and make statements.
And to, just to be fair, I would say that that property could be developed now, right? It, it's, it's not given permission to be developed because of three A. It could be developed now, but to your point, I think, and again, it's a name, I think it, you know, it should just be called Zone A, Zone B, so people don't get that connotation, like people think it's just Seal Harbor, it's not Fort Heath. Like, it should be Zone A, Zone B, and then you look it up and you see what it includes, because, I mean, you are taking responsibility, 'cause you didn't think, and you've, I'm the council president, and I didn't know. Maybe I should have, but, and again, it's not changing my vote one way or the other. I've been pretty adamant about where I am on the whole situation, but, yeah, I think, I, I think verbiage is a lot, and, and putting titles on something that may be necessary-- putting titles on something that maybe necessarily is a little misleading. I don't think it's purposeful, but, you know, I'm not happy.
No, and again, I, and again, I, you know, I respect you very much, and I, I mean, I respectfully disagree to an extent, but again, my point is, is just again, if people are gonna come out that are pro 3A, whether they're on the council or on the planning board, and make statements.
Right.
You need to correct those statements now, and please correct them now, with.
Yes, one, two more quick questions.
How many units would be required, how many units would be required to be built under the, under, under the plan the planning board's working on? How many units would be required to be built under that plan?
Well, if you, and again, I don't know how factual it is or not, but if you look at, I think they said that there would be a negative amount of units.
Negative amount.
I believe that's what was said. Now, is that factual? I don't know, but I believe that's what was said. But if you said how much of our town's property would be under the control of the state, I would have a different answer for that too, which, again, I just feel uncomfortable about, but yes, I think your point is that the plan being proposed technically might not increase units, and it factually might not increase units for one year, two years, three years, I don't know what it's gonna do after that. Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Part of people from other towns, close towns to us, and some of the people have the opinion that you can just ignore this one.
I'm sorry.
Ignore what's going on with the, they can ignore it.
The opinion is that we should ignore it?
Other ti, I didn't say we.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
I said some other towns, I talked to people that live in other towns, and they're of the opinion that they're gonna ignore the state, it's a bad law, we're trying to change it, or people say, oh, we have to go by the law. So many bad laws pass in this country and in this state, you can look it up.
There are a lot of laws currently that we do not enforce in this country. We don't wanna get into that.
In my case, having a, paid, get into a bad law, it was the lead law about 15 years ago, and the state, well, the smart guys from the universities decided to pass a lead law, and, and you had to join the club, the lead law club, you gotta buy suits, masks, epivax, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then, it was a bad law, it was all across the country, it was about 400,000 contractors times about $2,500 to join the club, to make sure you went by all the rules of lead, carpentry and painting, et cetera. And come to find out after a little while, and there was one incident with it, where someone was held accountable, just one person, and, and then they disappeared. They collected all the money, made you go by the guidelines, it was a bad law, because no one abided by it, that's why it was a bad law. I'm under the impression that, that this is a bad law, and if you ignore the state, my opinion, I'm not, I'm not passing this to the planning board or for the council, in my opinion, other people, well, not my opinion, I've talked to other people, that they're just gonna ignore it, and hopefully it'll go away, like the lead law went away.
Thank you.
And so other people are gonna try that to have it, thank you.
Thank you, and I wanna thank everybody for coming out, especially Counselor Schwob, Counselor Vice President Bautch, past President Gill, thank you all, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, always feel free to contact.